Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of June 7, 2022. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops in harms way?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, prior to this meeting, we had an executive session. No votes were taken. May I have a motion, please, to seal the minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous seven zero. For chairperson's remarks, first, please let the roll call reflect that all seven members are present tonight. And our little Compton representatives here, good to see you, your graduate class all done? Yeah. Oh, good job. And in case of emergency, if there is one, we will, we have exit doors here in front, one in the back, and we will meet over at the school administration building. For chair remarks, we, we had a busy week at the high school, and I hope people saw the Portsmouth Times article. We have seven graduating seniors accepted into military academies, seven. Three West Point, three Navy, and two Air Force. And, and you know, that is really an incredible accomplishment for the students, but I think also for the school and I'm sure wonderful both for their country and their parents who don't have to pay for college. So congratulations to all those. There were many more other awards given out at the senior awards night that was held prior to graduation. And congratulations to all the seniors for having a safe prom. We did not have to have our emergency school committee meeting the day after prom. So that's always an awesome thing. And many thanks to Vice Chair, Mr. Payaro, who gave the graduation remarks for the school committee and helped with the grieving. So I appreciate that and thank you very much. For those of you who don't know, and Mr. Ruda's here, he might be able to confirm if they can still get tickets. Friday night is the 50th anniversary celebration for PMS. And I know there's baskets because the school committee put together one. And shout out to Sandra Blank here for the helping majorly with that. And can people still get tickets, Mr. Ruda? You can. So it should be a wonderful evening. I think several of us here are going. So looking forward to celebrating 50 years of PMS. And then Melville also before that on Friday. I know we've also been invited to help with another, I think, the official, official ribbon coating of the outdoor learning space from five to seven, is it, I think? Oh, sorry. Oh, four to six ribbon cutting at 4:30. And there's a, and I've heard there's a food truck too, right? Well, there you go. So wonderful night there. Okay. And I know Dr. Kenworthy has some other things he wants to announce, so I'm not going to steal any of his thunder for that too. So subcommittee updates, health and wellness, Ms. Kelly.
The the Health and Wellness Subcommittee met on May 26. We received updates from each school, and everyone is busy with end of the year field trips and field days. The Prevention Coalition was busy ensuring that we had a safe prom, which was successfully realized last week. The Rhode Island Healthiest Schools Coalition has launched their Farm to School Network, which focuses on local food procurement throughout the state. And our next meeting is October 27.
Sorry, sorry about that. Is that better? So Personnel Subcommittee met for business items E and F and voted three zero to recommend them for consideration to the full committee. And then for C, the District Safety Committee meets quarterly to review the safety of the schools. And normally we don't report out anything on this because it's all, you know, to make sure it's secure. But the police chief did say that had a full leave to note that Portsmouth Police Protocol is to go in immediately in the event of any crisis in the schools, that they go in right away. They do not wait outside. And so just, I thought that would be very reassuring for parents to know as well. So anyway, that we're able to report out on that. Okay, moving on to recognitions. Tonight, it's both with, with real gladness, but also with a very heavy heart for our first recognition. We want to recognize our former school committee member, Mr. Alan Shears, who passed away recently. And we have a number of tributes to him here. And Mrs. Shears, if you would, joining me up front. And I know that Kevin Shears, Mr. Shear's son, is on Zoom as well as his sister Dawn Mite. So thank you all for joining us.
We'll be right here.
Thank you. So welcome. So the Portsmouth School Committee would like to present to you this plaque, presented with deep appreciation for Alan's services to the students and staff of the Portsmouth School Department from the Portsmouth School Committee and the Portsmouth School Administration. So thank you so much. And we just, it's a little thing, but we really, really are glad you're here to do it. Well, Alan, Alan added a lot to the committee with his humor and his energy and his tireless commitment to, to pretty much everything. Walking the grounds and spotting things that needed to be done for capital and, and really working on behalf of the kids.
And he had an opinion on everything. But, you know, he didn't care if people didn't disagree, but he wanted to give his opinion.
Yep.
And he wanted to make a difference. He really did. That was his goal.
Yeah, I think he really did. He really helped to improve.
Yeah.
Particularly facilities. I know athletics was near and dear to his heart.
And he's been on so many different committees over the years, so.
Well, we do have a couple of other citations here too. But first, I'd like to give the school committee, Mr. Ferber.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, and you brought it to mind with your comment there. Many of the opinions that Alan had still resonate. Because I can hear his voice on some of the issues that we occasionally speak of. But he was especially helpful in the capital budgeting for the, for the school. So he was a real treasure to have in the school.
To echo Fred, two words, septic tanks. I was, when I was a brand new member, I sat where Ms. Kelly sat. And one thing for anyone who's ever worked with Alan, you got the look. And that's when he wanted to discuss something, but he knew it was unpopular, but he was going to do it anyway. And it's probably the thing that I most miss on this committee. I'm sorry, I'm going to get, I'm going to stop. So yeah, your husband mentored.
Thank you. Now, we also have representatives from the town here. Mizu Jafusa, I think you want to have a proclamation, and Mr. Kelly's here from the Town Council. Mizu Jafusa?
So this is the Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island proclamation. I will read it. It's not that long, but I think Alan's accomplishment should be acknowledged. Whereas Alan James Shurs of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, was born in Berwyn, Illinois, and attended public schools and earned a bachelor's degree in political science from Brown University, where he played varsity basketball. Whereas Alan became an active member of his community, working as a real estate broker, appraiser, and consultant for 40-plus years and was active in public service in many capacities, including a member of the Town of Portsmouth School Committee, where he was Chair of the Capital Subcommittee, a member of the Personnel Subcommittee, and the School Committee Representative on the District Safety Committee. He was also an alternate member of the Portsmouth Zoning Board, a member of the Portsmouth Juvenile Hearing Board, Chairman of the Portsmouth Housing Committee for the Portsmouth Rhode Island Comprehensive Plan, a member of Portsmouth Citizens Interested in the Comprehensive Plan Committee, a member of the Portsmouth West Side Development Advisory Committee, Treasurer of the Portsmouth Water Board, a board member of the Newport County Board of Realtors, and a past president of the Middletown Lions Club. I may have left things out. I, and whereas, whereas Alan was a fierce advocate of public education and was not afraid to stand up for the best interests of the students. Whereas Alan passed away on Friday, November 5, 2021, in Providence, Rhode Island, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Portsmouth expresses our sincere appreciation and thanks to Alan Shurs for his service to the town, our schools, and the larger community, and give our deepest condolences to his family. In recognition whereof, as on behalf of the President of the Portsmouth Town Council, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, to here to be affixed this 23rd day of May, 2022. This was signed by Kevin Aguirre, our council president, and attested to by our town clerk, Jennifer West. So, yes, thank you. And I can only say that as brand. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
And I apologize because I skipped over. Ms. McDade and Ms. Blank, would you like to say anything about Alan?
Sure. I, I just want to add, I'm, I'm going to echo a lot of what other people said as well. Alan sat right here and I sat next to him for the time that I was on the committee. And I, I learned so much from him and admired so much his, his dedication. And his, as everyone has said, his opinions, he were very clear, made them very clear. And I, I didn't always agree with him, but he always made me think about what I really believed in and, you know, what I wanted to commit to. So I really deeply appreciated that. Such a pleasure to know him.
I just want to say I appreciate Alan's dedication to the town and the school committee throughout the years that he was here. I am humbled to serve on the committee and want to follow in his steps, putting the needs of the school first. He, he was a great man, and we were lucky to have had him on this team.
Thank you. And last but not least, State Rep, Ms. Terry Courtman.
Hi, good evening. I bring you a resolution on behalf of the House of Representatives, and it's signed by myself and Rep McGaw, who sadly couldn't be here tonight. The resolution reads very similarly to the one, so I won't, I won't read all the details because they are very similar. But I will just speak from my heart because I was fortunate enough to serve with Alan on the School Committee, on the Portsmouth Water Board, and on the West Side Advisory Committee. And we sparred once in a while, but always respectfully. And I never had any doubt that he had the best interest of the kids in mind. I remember when, I, I don't remember the exact event, but we reformulated the Safety Committee, and it was so important to Alan to be on that committee. He really, do you remember that? I, it really stuck with me and yes, he would be, I am sure, because he was always thinking of the kids and trying to put his talents to the best use for their benefit and for the whole town. So it's with deep regret, and I will miss him. And, and I enjoy, you know, we were neighbors and but so.
Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to say, would you like to say anything else?
I don't think so. I'm just really, you know, can't put it into words how nice this was. It was just wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And now, moving. Sorry. Oh, and now moving on to our next recognition, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is one of our last school committee meetings before the end of the school year. And we always want to take an opportunity here as things are winding down to recognize district employees who are retiring or leaving us after many years of service. So we did invite these individuals. I know I've seen some here, some maybe online. If you are here, I will, we'll call your name, recognize your years of service. Dr. Gobin has a certificate for you, and if you want to come up and also say a few words, you're more than welcome. So first up, retiring. So first up, retiring after 25 years of service in the district, currently in the role of school nurse teacher at Melville Elementary School. But anyone who has been with us the last few years will recognize the name of Mrs. Lynn Orvannes, who's also been our COVID-19 coordinator. And I know we just would not have been able to make it throughout the last few years and all of the constant pivots and turns and what to do. So we very much appreciate Lynn's service, certainly over her career, but in the last few years as COVID coordinator. So Lynn, I know you're here. If you want to come on up.
Thank you so much. It's, I have always considered being a nurse to be a tremendous privilege. And to have worked this many years in Portsmouth has been very, very special. I've enjoyed my colleagues. I love the children. And that'll be the hardest part, missing the kids. But it's when you start to have children say, I think you went to high school with my grandfather. It's time to go. Thank you very much.
All right. Yep, so we'll, we'll go through, continue through the list. So retiring with us after 11 years as an RBT paraprofessional, currently enrolled at Portsmouth Middle School, Suzanne Cosgrove. I don't think Suzanne is either with us or online, so we thank her certainly for her years with us. Also retiring as an RBT paraprofessional after 15 years, most recently at Portsmouth High School, and was also our current 2022 Portsmouth Support Professional of the Year, Ms. Carol Farrow. Retiring after 15 years of service in the district, currently a custodian at Portsmouth High School, Mr. Robert Ibbotson. Retiring after 19 years with us in Portsmouth as a science teacher at Portsmouth High School, Mr. David Innis. Checking to see whether any of these people are online with us. Retiring after 16 years in the district, currently a custodian at Portsmouth Middle School, Mr. Donald Loder. Retiring after 15 years in the district, an RBT paraprofessional at Portsmouth Middle School, Ms. Lindora Loops. After. I think when we get to the end here, there may be a few, a few other people that I've seen. But after 13 years in the district, currently our tech systems admin specialist in our IT department, Ms. Kimberly Riel. All right, I know I saw this face earlier. After 23 years in the district, retiring as a first grade teacher at Melville Elementary School, Ms. Valerie Sevigny.
I just wanted to say it was an honor to be a part of so many families' lives over the years. It has truly been a blessing. So thank you.
And last but not least, I know he's with us this evening. We wanted to take the opportunity to recognize after 28 years in the district, Portsmouth High School Principal, Mr. Joseph Amrell.
Well, I want to thank everyone for all the accomplice, superintendents, administration, folks that I've worked with, the school committee members, former PTO chair folks. And over the years, I've always been blessed and honored to work with people that really care about education, want to motivate the student cause. And over the last, probably last couple of years, my relationships have been a little bit different with students, particularly high school students, some of who are here in attendance. I really got to build a long-lasting relationship with them. And I want to thank all the students that have been under my care, both as a teacher, as a system principal, and as a principal to allow me to be part of their journey. So thank you very much.
I'm not going to add up all the years on the screen, but I think, I think we're probably over 100 in terms of service to Portsmouth and the kids and the families. And I was very, very blessed to have my two boys have all three of these individuals here. So thank you personally as well.
Great. So our last recognition this evening, we are going to recognize a number of students. I know I see many of them here this evening with their family members. So we are recognizing a number of middle school students this evening. For recently, we were informed that they have won the Presidential Environmental Youth Award. So this award recognizing outstanding stewardship projects developed by students in grades K through 12. The program promotes awareness of our nation's natural resources and encourages positive community involvement. The program was developed by the President and the EPA Environmental Protection Agency in 1971. These students have been invited to a ceremony in August in Washington DC for a formal recognition of this award. So this was under the direction of Mrs. Margie Brennan, Portsmouth Middle School and the AG Innovation Farm. So this evening, we would like to recognize, again, if you want to come up, receive your award. And we'll probably do the same with a group picture after. Tatum Brennan. Okay. Maggie Mullin. Next up is Brooke O'Brien. Next is Noah Sidewind. And then, okay, and then Owen Sidewind, same, okay. Next up is Annabelle Barber. And next we have Rowan Willett. Next is Stella McInerney. Next we have Aurelius Brockman. Next up is Elle McFadden. And Elizabeth Lance. Next we have Fiona Sorrow. Next up is Olivia Purdy. And we have Olivia Almili. And Cameron Davis. And then I know Mrs. Brennan is here. If you want to come up for the picture, for the picture, come on. Hey.
Congratulations, everybody. You do us all proud. Keep up the good work. Well done.
I just wanted to say that I was told by the Department of Education that our program that the students created, we are number one in the region, but we got the highest scores in the country. So, these guys are, have a lot to be proud of.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. It's really one of the, the best things we do to celebrate those who make a difference in Portsmouth and those who are helping make Portsmouth better. So. Um, now I know tomorrow is a school day, so if you guys need to exit stage right or left, whatever that is, you're more than welcome. So. Unless you want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, that's an option too. We'd be happy to have you. But this is where we normally lose our crowd. Bye. Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Well, just for those who are on Zoom, we'll just wait for a moment for everybody. We had a very nice crowd here tonight, so give everybody a couple of secs. Don't worry, high school liaisons, you still have people who will listen to your report. Ms. Aguirre, is there anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, nope, seeing no public comment at the stand or online. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is our new PHS Liaisons Communications. Please come forward, introduce yourself and welcome.
Hi there. I'm Elise Kerwin.
And I'm Fiona Daly. I'm standing in for Patty Little. Um, so recently at the high school this past week, we had senior week. The seniors had their senior picnic at the Glen where they had Ben and Jerry's Ice Cream Stand and they grilled. They had their senior prom at the Wyndham in Middletown, which went really well. And of course, their post-prom at the gym. They had the mechanical bull, bill, bowl, Hungry Hippos game, lots of food and prizes. And then, of course, last Friday, they had their graduation outside, which went really well. We also just had our junior prom, which was at the Marriott in Newport, and that went well. For our freshmen, we had a speaker, Ashley Bendixson, who talked to them about staying positive, being mentally healthy and working towards goals. We just had the Senior Book Awards and we have the Junior Book Awards coming up this week on Thursday. We had our Student Council Elections and we have the Executive Board Elections tomorrow. Uh, next week is finals for the underclassmen and the two weeks ago, we had senior finals. Uh, we also had AP tests recently. I think Portsmouth High School was in the top five for the most AP tests in the state. Um, and then we also just had our New Year's Day on June first, where all the students got their schedules for next year. We also had our first blood drive since COVID, which was really exciting. We had thirty-seven people show up to donate, but eight were deferred. So, we had twenty-nine donors, which helped eighty-seven people. And then our girls' lacrosse team won the Division Two Championship this past weekend, and our track team is headed to New England this upcoming weekend. And Mr. Riley was voted Teacher of the Year for the upcoming school year. And that's all.
Great. Thank you very much. Well done. You're looking forward to summer break. Yes, okay. All right. Thank you. Superintendents update. Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, just any personnel updates since our last meeting. We did recall two custodians, we, for some vacancies that we know we're going to have, we had a couple individuals on our recall list. So, we recalled David Silva to a custodial position at Portsmouth High School and Gary Hamilton to a position at Portsmouth Middle School. Uh, we did receive the resignation of Chelsea Burke, who's been with us for a number of years with Dr. Colwell in the Office of People Personnel Services. So, um, she did just recently have a baby and has decided to stay home with her child, and we certainly wish her the, the best of luck with that. And then one retirement announcement since the last meeting, and we did recognize this individual earlier. So Suzanne Cosgrove, Registered Behavioral Technician at Portsmouth Middle School. I do have an announcement to make this evening, a selection for the next principal of Portsmouth High School. That will be covered in the business portion under item F, so I will hold the announcement until then.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on to some district updates since our last meeting. Uh, so you do have a total breakdown of COVID nineteen cases. We have been doing that since last year. And as we returned to school after the pandemic and we decided to continue it this year, I think most districts plan to phase that out into the coming year as COVID is just becoming more and more of a, you know, something that we're, we're living with, but I will keep you informed on that. I did want to report that since our last meeting in late May, Newport County did join the other Rhode Island counties in moving into the high transmission category under the revised CDC guidelines. However, at the start of this week, all Rhode Island counties have now moved back down into the moderate category. So, you know, we'll probably continue to see that ebb and flow. Rather than Department of Health and Rhode Island Department of Education officials are just continuing to encourage district leaders to stay in communication with community stakeholders as we do, and to reemphasize tools for protection and the COVID nineteen isolation protocol. So, we will continue to do that. We covered a lot of district events this evening already. Did just want to point out again, this is will be our last meeting before the official end of the school year, although we have one more school committee meeting after, but our school year will end on Friday, June thirteenth. So, schools, you know, are continuing to hold end-of-year events and activities such as field days and class celebrations. I want to thank all members of the PSD community for their collaboration and support. Oh, I should look up there every once in a while to see what Heather is doing. All right. But again, just to thank all members of the PSD community for their collaboration and support in getting us through another challenging school year. But we certainly were able to see a lot of positive outcomes from that. Uh, and just a reminder, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year will begin for grades K five and nine on August thirtieth, and then for all students on August thirty-first. I certainly wish all students, staff and families a happy, safe and healthy summer. Uh, lastly, I know we talked about some safety-related items earlier, so I did just want to highlight something you may have seen in the news. All Rhode Island districts have been asked to, this is something we do every year annually, but the commissioner did ask superintendents to help just kind of review this process and resubmit to the Department of Education. And at our safety committee meeting last week, the chief of police offered to join me. So, yesterday and today, we did two schools yesterday, two schools today. Uh, we just again went through a checklist that we have that we keep on file with the state, did a comprehensive review, got collaboration of the police department. Uh, we will resubmit these reviews as this will be a requirement for districts. There is supposed to be an application process for additional funding for safety and security upgrades, so we will keep our eyes on that certainly. And this was a requirement to be able to apply if we so choose for those funds. So, I will keep you updated on that. Finally, at our last meeting on June twenty-first, Mr. Trezvant will be here to give a recap of our spring athletic season, which has been very successful. One of the highlights we heard already was this past weekend, our girls' lacrosse team won the state championship. So, we'll hear more about that next time. That is it. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you very much. Now, next up is our presentation, and this month we are having the Special Education District Update. Dr. Colwell.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to take the presentations home because I'm the last one of the year. So, you have in your backup some of the things that we'll be talking about tonight. So, I think I'd like to start first with just some celebrations and shout-outs. Um, and you've heard some of these names through Dr. Kenworthy's updates and whatnot, but I think we have much to celebrate in the area of special education. So, the first thing that I'd like to share obviously is a shout-out to our District Support Professional of the Year, Carol Faro, who's also retiring. We've also had Golden Apple Award, Victoria Travis. So, for some of you who are able to celebrate in that or see that news, uh, news story. It was quite special that day when we all embarked down to Hathaway School and celebrated with her. We have transitioned this year, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slides. We've transitioned to safety care this year, and a real big shout-out goes to Mark Goncalves, Nicole DeRozier and Victoria Travis as our district trainers. They collectively trained a hundred-plus staff as we transitioned from CPI, which I'll explain a little bit more about, into safety care. And as a district, we are well-preve, uh, well-positioned to respond to crises when students are in need, and that's all students. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a little, little bit. And then, of course, as has been pointed out, we have retirees. We have a lot of retirees this year. So, we have Carol Faro, as I mentioned above, Suzanne Cosgrove and Lindy Lopes, and you know, these ladies have been here since I arrived in two thousand fifteen. And, um, you know, they really have contributed a lot to the work that we have done in the district, and, and I will miss them. And then it goes without saying, my partner in crime, Lynn Alvarn, is particularly, not only as nursing coordinator, but as our COVID coordinator. Lynn and I have spent quite a bit of time together, and it wasn't uncommon for us to have seven o'clock AM meetings on my way in and trying to problem-solve whatever COVID issue might have brought us to needing to talk or a substitute issue. So, I, I certainly wish her well in retirement. And then lastly, we had our local advisory committee awards. And collectively, we had, of the special ed staff, we had sixty-four nominations across the district for a local advisory committee award, which is tremendous. It's probably the most that we have had since, since, since we started or since Portsmouth had its own special ed program. So, there was lots to celebrate that night, lots of tears. And for those of you who were there, I think you can tell it is a testament, and it is a wonderful, wonderful evening for this community to celebrate. So, let's talk a little bit about just our special education program at a glance. And what you have on this slide here includes just where we are in terms of the number of students that we have receiving special education services across the district. And you'll notice that some of them are asterisked by indicating that students may have speech-only services, which does, which does influence the overall number with those speech-only numbers, which often occurs a lot at the preschool level. And when we get to the next slide, I'll, I'll share a little bit more about the influence of that in our overall referrals. Collectively, we also include in our census the students who go to NAC Tech. So, by Rhode Island Department of Education requirements, we keep them in our census, even though they may attend part-time or full-time at NAC Tech. So, collectively, as of June the sixth, we have three hundred and sixty students with IEPs, which represents about fifteen percent of our population, which is right in line nationally with overall identification. If you're wondering where we were about a year ago, we were just a little bit less at around three fifty, three fifty-two. So, so the numbers have ebbed and flowed, and I think one of the influencing factors to consider, just when you look at the numbers, is that we are a military community, so we do have a, a level of a transient population. So, when you see the, the next slides with, you know, the referrals, that shouldn't just be anticipated, that we should add that number to three sixty, because students come and students go. So, let's talk a little bit about those initial referrals. Not surprisingly, we have seen a significant increase in the referrals to special education, and I've given you four years of, of data. I, I have it from years previous, and it's been fairly steady. But by looking at it, you can see, you know, that two thousand twenty-one, we saw a decrease in referrals. And certainly, all of the, all of the influencing factors would tell me that COVID certainly influenced that. But certainly for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, you can see a tremendous increase, and those increases really have been mostly at the preschool level. We have seen a, a significant sharp increase in referrals for our littlest learners as three and four-year-olds. And if you think about it even a little bit further back, students who turn three might have been students that were in early intervention. And we know that there were struggles with early intervention and order from that birth through two, two-year, twelve-month timeframe for those students to get some services. And then when we look at our, our school age programming, you know, our K through twelve students, we know that there's a direct correlation nationally with the number of referrals, and in this case, the increase in referrals with the outcomes of COVID. And one of the things that we have, you know, really worked hard to, to, to share with staff, to share with families, is that there's really a line, and sometimes it gets blurred with what is, what was COVID recovery? What was COVID learning loss and what's a true disability? And that's going to take us a while, I, I believe, to, to get past understanding those, those differences. And I don't just mean Portsmouth. This is not uncommon. I talked to my colleagues, who are a fairly close-knit bunch, and we have all seen significant increases. For us, it's a fifty-eight percent increase over last year in referrals. We still have some that are in process, so we'll, you know, I'll know more as we wind out the rest of the year in terms of, of those one hundred and eighteen, what the actual total is of students who qualified. But it is, the numbers are, are quite, like I said, are quite telling. And as you know, through our ESSER grant, you know, that Dr. Riveros has worked significantly, tremendously hard on, there will be opportunities for kids, all kids, to be able to, to bridge their learning losses and whatnot, you know, in the coming summer. And then the plans that are in place for the coming, you know, few school years while that grant is available to help us recover from COVID. And I mentioned that we had transitioned to safety care. So, for, for those of you that may have, you know, I've worked with, you know, since I came to the district in two thousand fifteen, we were a CPI district, a Crisis Prevention Intervention District. And by Rhode Island regulation, we're supposed to have, or we have had, and we've, we've certainly adhered to that, we have to have an advanced team who is able to respond if there is a need for students who may need some crisis prevention or intervention, I should say, or physical intervention. So, as time has gone on, there have been, there's a number of different programs out there, and safety care, I had been watching it for a few years. Other districts had adopted it. I did my research. I convened a, a little bit of a, a small team to embark on whether or not safety care would be a good, a good program for us to move to. It ties in very, very nicely with the RBTs in this district. One of the things that, that has been committed to is the idea that all of our teacher assistants, while they come to us with that credential, we exceed the standard, if you will, by requiring them to have that RBT credential. And with safety care, there's a real nice connection with the ideas of intervention, both physically and through a crisis perspective for safety care. I think if our trainers were here tonight, they would tell you that safety care has brought about a little bit level of an ease in terms of some of the, when we do have students who may need physical intervention, those particular strategies are a lot easier to execute than they were with CPI. So, we have, as a district, transitioned fully. We, you know, obviously continue to meet the legal requirements. And to date, we have a hundred, a hundred staff who are trained, which is again, very tremendous. Building principals have developed their teams, and we do have all of our teacher assistants. And we do have all of our teacher assistants as a, you know, a condition of, of, of their work here in the district to be trained. And then we fill in, you know, with our mental health staff who are trained, along with various certified staff and building principals as well. I think another piece of, of really great work, and I'm pleased to have been able to work with Mrs. McDay on this, is just our overall website refresh. Last year, when we moved to our new website, while I would always not say that the, our, my portion of the website was, you know, the most, I would say, perhaps maybe the best and most inviting. There was at least information there. And then when we went to the new website platform, it became abundantly clear that there were things that didn't transition over. So we had an opportunity to be able to work with our communications consultant to refresh and revise the website. And I think this is really great work. I think the work and the information that's available to families is very real. Hopefully, they will find it to be informative so that when they do have questions, it's easy on the eyes. It's easy to access and they know exactly where to get the information. And hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at it. But there was a lot of work through with, you know, Mrs. McDay. Dr. Riveros was, was part of that work. And then, of course, enlisting some of the, enlisting the special ed coordinators to have another set of eyes on it as well, to make sure that, you know, it said and represented what we wanted it to represent. And I would like to thank the families who allowed us to use pictures. I think, you know, as our, as Mr. Haran pointed out, you know, it's great you can use stock pictures. But when you use real pictures, it does add a level of, of real reality, you know, to, to making it feel like it is Portsmouth. So some of the enhancements is, if you have had an opportunity to take a look, include just understanding the process of special education, some of our common terms, frequently asked questions, and then just how to access special ed records. If, you know, there's a family in need who's either coming into the district or exiting the district. One of the other pieces that my office also worked on this year is doing a full transition, a full final transition to using Aspen, which is our student information system, to the section 504 module. It has been a labor of love and Mr. Costa and his team was very helpful in helping us with Beth Farley to finally get this to a place where we would be able to essentially manage the section 504 process in an electronic format, very similar to the work that we did with Aspen in the special ed module. Aspen's a very powerful, you know, product. And, you know, as a district, we've really grown with it, whether it was through the health module, the 504 module, special ed module, and the list goes on. So we have transitioned fully to integ- integrating it for our 504 process. We went from paper to this kind of electronic system, which was, it was very, it was tremendous. And at the building level, with the help of the building principals, we were able to use this year to get all of the 504 plans in, and they are now in. We also enacted the use of the document storage. So if there is paper, whether evaluations come in, releases of information or whatever comes in, we have the ability to use the electronic file system within Aspen, complete with naming conventions that my office developed so that there's consistency when you go into it. And these may sound like little things, but think about the number of people who go into or the number of staff who may have access. And if they don't know, for instance, you know, there's different naming conventions or they may not know how to find particular documents or they may not know how to find particular processes. So again, tremendous work and the collective effort of, of just so many to make it happen. Along with, you know, our work with the website, we also developed a special education family guidebook. Some of you know that we have a special education guidebook for staff. That was something I deliver, developed with the specialty coordinators back in 2015. It's gone through a few revisions because we make a commitment to revising it, you know, every few years. And the guidebook was really, I think the district was positioned to be able to, to be in a position of having another piece of information to be able to access for understanding special education, understanding everything from what happens when you make a referral, understanding what happens when you come into the district. And you may have a question about who to call or how to, how to just contact someone. So between myself and the special ed coordinators, we are at the point now where the document is actually just going through one, one more over editing. And then it, you know, my plan is to be able to have it ready for some input. I think Mrs. McDay, and I don't want to, if I'm mistaken, you can tell me, but I think you had offered to take a review of it. I've had some, I've had some building. I know, right? No pressure. So I've had some teachers, some staff, as well as some building administrators who are very interested in just putting another set of eyes on it and providing some feedback on it. But I think one of the things that will be nice is that it will be a live document. So it will be stored on the website so that if a family, you know, comes into the district or has a question as an existing family, hopefully they will be able to access it. And, and it will answer their question or at least point them in the direction of, okay, well, I may not understand this. I still have questions. Who can I call? So again, some of the topics are information on the school department, special education process, options and resources, as well as FAQs timelines, national organizations and terms. And, you know, for options and resources, I aligned it to the language that essentially is used by the Rhode Island Department of Education. As you, as you all know, there are, you know, there are instances where, you know, families may not agree with something that occurred, you know, throughout the special ed process. And there is a process that was intended when the IDEA was enacted through Congress that hopefully this, this section of the manual will outline so that it's a little bit easier to understand for families. And then lastly, I think this might be lastly. Lastly, as you are all aware, the House and Senate passed the Nathan Bruno and Jason Flatt Act. And my office has been actively watching and awaiting the required guidance that the Rhode Island Department of Education would be providing. Throughout the course of the last months, the Rhode Island Department of Education has sent out in segments, various pieces of information regarding the district, every district in Rhode Island's responsibility to enacting the components of the act. So the first piece that came out had to do with a curriculum. And I guess the easiest way to say it is there were various buckets of components that, that ride was charged with ensuring that districts had some guidance on. So the first one that came out was the curriculum. And one of the requirements of, of the, the act requires that districts adopt a ride approved curriculum. In the fall, late fall, the first piece of that information came out and the curriculum that were, that ride, one of the curriculums, we found out after that there were others that ride approved. But at the time, we understood it to be just one as signs of suicide. And quite candidly, that was a great match for us because we already use components of it through our health classes. In addition to that, Ride was going to fund the, the cost of the curriculum for the first year. And then districts will pay for the cost in subsequent years. So I brought my team together. It was representatives from the middle school and the high school, which is where the act mostly affects in terms of students and instruction. And we collectively made the decision that we would embark on signs of suicide. So the next piece to that involved us trying to understand, okay, well, how will we integrate it into the health curriculum? There have been changes. So that work is done. I have my final meeting actually with them next Wednesday. And we will be in a position of just ensuring that the curriculum aspect is ready to go for September and that school-based mental health providers will be there as a support for the components. The curriculum itself is not, don't, don't, don't be misled in thinking that the curriculum is a very long curriculum. It is certain components that may, depending on how long the class, the class period is, may take, we'll say between two and three classes. That is the design. So when we think of a curriculum, often think, we think a whole year. This is not a year-long curriculum. It's specifically designed to be short-term annual integration into, you know, the district and the students' learning experience in grade six through 12. So again, we, we, we are on our pathway to signs of suicide. The next thing that came out was staff training. And with staff training, Ride again provided a list of their approved programs for, for staff training. We chose another MindWise product. MindWise actually is the one, the publisher of Signs of Suicide. We chose the ACT, the Acknowledge, Care, and Tell Program for Staff Training. We chose that for a few reasons. One mostly being that it was complementary to Signs of Suicide rather than choose two separate products. It also allows for some self-guided training, which we thought might be appealing to staff. And it's not just press the button and watch the video. It's press the button and interact with the video. So, so there is a level of, of accountability. And it had also received some really nice reviews as being a research-based product. All of them are research-based that Ride suggested. However, this one in particular, through some of our research indicated that it was, we could call it super research-based. So, so we are in the process of that. I've made my recommendation to Dr. Kenworthy. And we anticipate that that will, it will need to, not anticipate, it will need to be integrated as we return in the fall. And then just lastly, Ride just released, I want to say it was last week, their guidance for writing a policy. So this is the third prong. And the policy that, that they have provided is probably about, I want to say it's like a 17-page document for how to write your policy. So I have enlisted, working with Attorney Carol's office. She and I are, or her associate and I are working on this now. I anticipate that you'll have a policy before you, you know, obviously through policy subcommittee. But there is a policy that will be forthcoming that will outline various components. Some of the things we've talked about, staff training, curriculum integration, what happens if there is an incident of student suicide postvention, intervention and whatnot. So it will, when it comes before you, you know, you will know that this will be the last piece that we will need to do in order to be compliant in this area. So a lot of great work, a lot of great discussion with the team. And I think that the work that the team has done has been very thoughtful and really is positioning the district to, to really be supporting students who may, who may have suicidal ideation and helping staff how to respond to it. And the last thing that's not here that I just, I really do want to share is that, you know, like everyone else, this year has certainly been challenging. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my, my three special ed coordinators that I work with on a daily basis. While they are in the schools and I know their schools love them and appreciate all the work that they do because I hear it. I appreciate them. So I just want to acknowledge the work of Lauren Burris as our early childhood coordinator, Dina Duffy, our student support specialist slash special ed coordinator at Hathaway in Melville, and Brooke Grant, who has been essentially doing what I will refer to as double duty between the middle school and the high school this year. Because as you know, we were planning to have a special ed coordinator full-time at the high school. And without a candidate, Brooke stepped up again to help us out in really covering both buildings. So they really have been tremendous. And I, I'm hopeful that as we continue to recover from COVID, that their work will be able to return to some level of pre-COVID, if that's even a thing. So. Right, Mr. Farber.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Okay, questions? Mr. Payo and Mr. Ferber, or we've had their hand up first. Mr. Ferber.
Suicide ideation, have we seen an increase in it? And then a second corollary question. Are you comfortable that our students are comfortable representing concerns about fellow students to somebody like yourself or somebody on your staff that they may feel is too introverted to? That they express a feeling that somebody needs attention from, you know, somebody in the school department that would be appropriate for that individual?
So in terms of the increases, I'm not sure that I would be able to pinpoint it to suicidal ideation. I could pinpoint need to social emotional learning, social emotional challenges that kids have had, which may result in students feeling like they might want to hurt themselves. It may, it may not start that way, but it might end that way. So, so if, to, to just take out suicide, I'm not sure that I would be prepared to say that there's been an increase, a decrease, or if it's stayed the same. But I do know that there is a correlation with the increase in social emotional needs that kids have had. Second to that, I do feel, I, I, I'll tell you, you know, you know that I'm not in the buildings every day. But I do certainly have lots of conversations because I meet with the mental health staff every other week through our clinical team. And I, I do believe that when kids are seeking help, the staff are there to respond. And I know that because when students report something to their teachers or they report something to a school counselor or a school psychologist, social worker, student assistance counselor, the action that needs to be taken is a risk screening to determine what level of, of ideation or suicide ideation might be presenting itself and what kind of intervention is needed, whether it's to contract for safety, whether it's to, to actually go to the hospital and have a full evaluation.
Just a follow-up question. The, the students that concern me the most, but that concern me are the students who don't seek help, that they sort of internalize everything. And who, who can recognize the signs of that? And then what do you do about it?
I think that's a great question, Mr. Farber, because in the act for the Nathan Bruno and Jason Flatt Act, I think one of the factors of requiring staff to have annual training is, is going to help with that, where staff will understand the signs if they have students in their classrooms. It is going to, when, I think I went, I, I saw the training before we purchased the product. I wanted to see what it was all about. And the product does focus on knowing the signs, understanding the signs and not just looking, you know, out, you know, in a, in a general sense. But as you're talking with students, picking up on things that they might, they might say. Can I guarantee, can anyone guarantee that that's going to ensure that every student who may be struggling is, is going to be identified? No, but I think that the, the overall goal is to increase the awareness, which will ultimately increase intervention if there is a student in need.
Thank you. Mr. Payo?
Dr. Kala, I have a couple of questions in both.
Absolutely.
Staying on this topic, it says, you said that Ride is going to fund the first year of the curriculum for Signs of Suicide. What would be the ongoing cost to keep the curriculum in the district? And if you have a price tag, how long, like, we're looking at a curriculum for anything else, what would be the price tag?
Yeah, yep. So, so the signs of suicide, and I'm, I'm going to apologize because I don't, I will get you the information for signs of suicide. I've been focusing more on the staff training because that is not, and I did look it up. I just don't have it. So I want to give you right in for correct information. As far as the staff training, it's about $870 a year. And for the staff training, it is from a K through 12 perspective, which means we would do it times four. It's a building site license. So figure, just for argument's sake, $3,600 a year, if you round up to 900. My hope would be that, of course, one of the things I would ask, because that's how I roll. And that is, you know, do we have opportunities for multi-year contracts? So that if this is what we want to stick with after the first year, can we do a multi-year and have some savings?
I'm sure that's music that this is here.
I try.
With the special education breakdown, is there any way, and this is a request for info, between the schools, if we can break down the 129 number, it doesn't have to be right.
The 119?
It says 129 on the elementary schools. If we could break it down between the two schools, I just would love to see a difference.
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Three. Uh, three. Says Portsmouth Special Education.
Oh, sure, yes.
If you just break it down by school.
Sure, not a problem. Yep, that's perfectly fine.
And then the last one for, on page four is, I, I know that we have a one eighteen number for twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, but I'm just kind of curious, how many referrals did we actually receive after March thirtieth, twenty-twenty? Because, just because on sheer, uh, on sheer, like, numbers, it just would skew the numbers. I kind of had the same question for, Dr. Veros earlier this year when looking at the academic progress. Wouldn't it be, and, and I'm not negating the, the need students have, but just on numbers, wouldn't it be m- more helpful in order to base it off twenty-nineteen when we had a more traditional school year? Base, rather than the twenty-twenty-one where it wasn't as much, and also twenty-twenty-two? Then I have a piggyback question to that. If we did have referrals after March thirteenth, how did we do it? What provide, what's, how were services provided? If you can't answer it now, don't worry about it. You could follow, either. I'm sorry, I know it's a loaded question.
No, so, so I think I can. I'm going to try, and then you tell me if I don't, okay? All right. So, uh, in twenty-nineteen, I would tell you that the number of referrals after March, after March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, went down significantly. And I'll get that for you. Now, to answer your question about comparing nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two, if I were to go back a few more years, it's been fairly flat. So that ninety-seven, ninety-one, the variance is, is relatively the same in the previous years. For, um, for how we provided services after March thirteenth, twenty, um, twenty-twenty, um, well, like everybody else, uh, we, we really, uh, brought our collective thoughts together in order to obviously shift to distance learning. Our students did have services. Um, there were districts that, that they were offered services. There were districts that would post things and say, you know, they, I'm not here to say that that was right or wrong because we were all trying to figure it out. We were not experts in COVID. But our teachers quickly pivoted and were meeting with kids online. Some of the challenges, like everything else, was if kids were not online, kids were still trying to have, may have had connectivity issues where they were still trying to figure out the technology. But the teachers, um, were certainly meeting with kids. Um, I remember that week where we were planning vividly. Um, it, it was probably something I'll never forget, where we were really trying to, um, pull it together on the general ed side for how kids were going to learn and then how those services were going to be provided. Speech pathologists were meeting with kids. And then, in full disclosure, if you think about physical therapy, that was probably a bit of a, a bit of a struggle. Um, but those, those physical therapists were, um, available in order to be able to at least consult to families, provide, um, appropriate, um, I can't call it therapy, but exercises that kids could do who might have had physical therapy. On the academic side, teachers were available, um, scheduled kids, had kids meeting with them in order to provide the services. But like anything else, it was a large challenge for kids who were accustomed to being live in front of, you know, their teachers. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Done? Okay. Ms. McDate?
Um, thanks, first of all, Dr. Caldwell for, um, his presentation. But I have some questions about, um, you were talking about, um, five oh four information being available on Aspen. And my question with that and with IEP information is, who, who has access to that information? How much information do they have access to? Is it a full IEP, a full five oh four? Is it just goals? Or how does that work?
Sure, great question. So, you know, Aspen has a number of security features and, and, uh, Mr. Costa might, uh, might have some additions, but from my, you know, little neck of the woods, one of the things that's important to note is that no, not everybody has access to everything. There is, there are features in Aspen essentially to lock down, um, who can have access to what. So if I happen to be a special ed case manager or special educator, I will have access to my students and my students only in the form of their documents, IEPs, and whatever is in there. If I am a general ed teacher, my access is accommodations. And if you, in Aspen, there are certain icons that if you press it, it will, um, trigger those accommodations, uh, to, to come up. Also, within Aspen, you check off, um, for instance, for us in special ed, you check off the box that says special ed. And then from there, there are other features that will only allow people who have an educational interest to be able to view, um, what is in the module for a particular student.
So five oh fours are not special ed though?
Correct. Five oh four is set up the same way. Mr. Costa set it up the same way. And for five oh four, if you're a classroom teacher, you hit the five oh four icon and those accommodations come up.
Um, do parents have access to that information at all?
Parents have, um, they don't have the same level of access because it's in the parent portal. So Aspen has a parent portal. What I'm referencing is essentially the employee portal or the, the, the school-based staff portal. Sure.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions. There is no mention in here of out-of-district placements? Um, of that three hundred and sixty students, how many of those are out of district?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay. And is that relatively constant? Or I know they can change, but?
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a, a good question. Um, the answer is generally yes. We've had a couple of years and you probably, you know, if I brought it, you know, back with some of the data, you say, oh, I remember that. Um, there, um, there have been some years where we have spiked, um, but it has remained generally very stable. Um, you know, it's a very small percentage of our overall population of, of students with IEPs. Um, so, um, and of those, um, of those, you know, students, um, keeping in mind that it's not just K through twelve. There are, you know, students who are students in twelve-plus programs or students who have stayed on beyond, you know, they'll be with us till they're twenty-two.
Thank you. And then, um, on the page four of the PowerPoint where you're talking about initial referrals, um, to special ed. So, I mean, if you look at the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two year where you had a hundred and eighteen referrals, but not all of those are going to get IEPs, is this where some of them would get siphoned off to five oh fours? Some to IEPs, some to RBT or, or not RBT, RTI?
Yes, that's correct. So that is the referral that does it. What that doesn't share is the actual number of, of folks who, or students, excuse me, who were eligible for services. And we're still, you know, winding down the school year. Granted, I have the majority of the numbers at this point, but we're still, um, winding down the school year with final eligibility meetings. Um, so that is correct. Of that one hundred and eighteen, there are some who would be identified as, yes, having a disability that would require special education services. There are some that are no. And then there are some who the team has said, you know, we do believe that there's a disability here, but it doesn't either meet the second or the third prong of, of eligibility for special education. And that would trigger an automatic referral to the section five oh fourteen for consideration.
So I don't know if you can share this or if this is privacy data, but, but of that hundred and eighteen, how many were appro- approximately would be approved for IEPs or?
So I have, I do have, yeah, I have that information. So right now, we are just at about, um, we're just at about maybe forty-five total.
Forty-five approvals.
Forty-five not eligibles.
Forty-five out of that hundred and eighteen. So over fifty percent then would, that would have been eligible.
And I think the thing to keep in mind, if you're wondering, well, if I look at the previous page, you're saying that there hasn't been a change. You have to remember, students go on and off IEPs. So it's all going to, it's all going to, um, reflect that students go on and off IEPs over the course of the year.
Okay. Um, and so if we switched, and this is on the other question, if we switch from CPI to safety care, and the first one was really focusing on prevention, does the safety care have the prevention element to it too?
Yes, great question. CPI, that is their, um, that is just the name of their product, crisis prevention intervention. Safety care, um, any good, um, I shouldn't say any good. The premise would be that you never want to put hands on, on students. That is your last resort. But all kids, in, in terms of responding to crisis, at that point, whether you're using CPI or you're using safety care, have demonstrated some level of, of either wanting to hurt themselves or somebody else. And when the team goes in, because they are the advanced trained team, they're going in for that crisis to intervene in both products.
In both.
In both products. Yeah, I think it's just the semantics of CPI. Um, but they're all going in to de-escalate. That is always the first piece. There's, it's never to go in to put, you know, put hands on kids. But there are times where kids cannot be managed by using all of the techniques for de-escalation. And it therefore requires, um, if, some level of hands-on physical intervention.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, seeing no further questions, uh, we'll move on to approval of. Sorry? Oh, sorry, thanks. Um, approval of school committee minutes.
I move for the approval of the school committee meeting minutes of, uh, May twenty-fourth and the executive session meeting minutes of May twenty-fourth.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, uh, seven, zero? Well, I'm sorry, one second. Uh, Mr. Payo, um, this, there was a, a thing in chat. I'm sorry, this was from, uh, Mr. Costa. I just wanted to share that if I can get it up here. Uh, correct, we harden the privileges by setting up the role-based permissions for all staff in Aspen, Ms. McDate. So that was just a little bit more elaboration to your question there.
I move for discussion and action on.
No, uh, you need to make a motion one way or the other. Don't you make a motion?
Are we on item A under business? Okay, then I move for denial of the grievance.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero. Business fee, please.
I move for discussion and action on the bid award for Hathaway ACM tile replacement project.
Second.
Mr. Deero, these were happy numbers.
Yes, uh, so, uh, this is the first of three bid awards, um, tonight on the agenda, all of which are funded with the bond. Approved last November, so I'm happy to, um, recommend that, uh, for the, uh, Hathaway asbestos tile replacement project. The, uh, low bidder was Marin Construction Company, Inc., uh, with a, uh, base bid price of a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, uh, which was below our, uh, budget of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, eight, two hundred and twenty, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Any questions? All in favor? Unanimous, seven, zero.
I move for discussion and action on the bid award for Melville ACM tile replacement project.
Second.
Mr. Deero?
So this is, uh, the second, uh, of the three, uh, bid awards. Um, the only school not having worked on this year, uh, for asbestos is, um, the middle school. Uh, so again, uh, we had two bidders, um, when we opened the bids, Marin Construction Co., Inc., again, was the low bidder. Um, so I'm recommending, uh, that you award, uh, the contract for the Melville asbestos tile replacement project to Marin Construction Company at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which is below the budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I guess my only question is, if they get all three contracts, can they get all the work done in the summer? Because the numbers are great.
Yes, uh, so we, yes, so we did, we've had those discussions. Uh, we have, uh, kickoff meeting with them, I believe, on Tuesday of next week. They're also doing the work at the high school for the ADA bathroom renovations. So, um, they definitely have, um, a leg up coordinating with all that work together. Um, they do not believe they're going to have an issue getting the work done. The, there's no supply chain issues with tile. Um, so really, it's just a labor. Um, and we have had several conversations with them. They're aware of the deadlines. Um, we've set that as, uh, August fifteenth is a substantial completion. And, uh, between myself, facilities director, the OPM, the architect, uh, we will be all over them on this. So, uh, we will not get out of here.
Great. Other questions? Ms. Blank?
Will they be doing all the construction in concurrents or will it be in series?
So they'll be working, uh, in all the buildings at the same time, and they will sequence that and work with our architect to, they'll have to coordinate off and, and, uh, secure certain areas. Um, so they'll be working, uh, with our architect and OPM to figure out the best way to do that. Um, like I said, uh, we're awarding tonight. We've had some preliminary conversations. We have a kickoff meeting next week.
Okay, thank you.
No, for, seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero.
I move for discussion and action on the bid award for the Portsmouth High School tile replacement project.
Second.
Mr. Deero?
Sure. So this is again, the last one, um, at the high school. Again, uh, two bidders. Marin Construction Co. was the low bidder again. Uh, so I'm, uh, requesting tonight that you award, um, the contract for the high school asbestos tile replacement project to Marin Construction Co., Inc. Uh, for the base bid price of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, below the budget of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. Uh, there were two alternates, uh, alt one and alt two, both of which, um, bids came in above, uh, the remaining budget. So, uh, what I'm hoping is, uh, as we get further into our bond projects, um, if we have savings on other high school projects in the future, we could always, um, repurpose that, that money to rebid these alternates and get that work done in a future year.
Sounds good. Ms. Ms. McDate?
I'm just curious. These are significant, uh, these numbers are significantly under what our estimates previously were. And this says that the other bids were above what our estimates were. Do you have a sense of why they're able to come in so low and what, what makes the difference here?
Well, I mean, we had two bidders. Um, the costs were not materially the same. Um, the second bidder was much higher, much closer to our budgets. Um, I can't say why these bids came in below. Um, I'm happy they did. Um, they may just be staffed properly. The other bidder may have had to go out and, um, looking, paying for a higher staff. I'm not exactly sure. Um, I'm happy that these bids came in. I will, I will, yeah, I mean, I will tell you that when we went through and did the budgets, um, we were very much aware, um, based on conversations with town and experience with the police station that, um, we needed to make sure that our budgets were adequate and that we weren't left unable to complete our projects. So that was something, uh, at the forefront as we did our budget. So, again, we're hitting a lot of inflation. This is probably the simplest of all the projects. I mean, we're buying floor tile and people are ripping up floor and putting it down. As we buy an elevator, that could be a lot more expensive. As we construct roads, um, moral drive, that could be a lot more expensive. So, um, let's take this one to the bank for now.
Yeah, no, I'm thrilled to see it. I just want to make sure there's not something that's going to come back and bite us later.
No, no, our, our, um, RFPs are, were, were very thorough. I mean, I've gone through them. And again, we've had several conversations and, um, everybody's on board with what we need to do and what we need to come by.
Thank you. Other questions? No, I meant, we have to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero.
I move for discussion and action on the Portsmouth Middle School principal contract.
Second.
Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you. I am recommending, uh, for your approval this evening, a, a contract renewal for Mr. Ruda, principal of Portsmouth Middle School. This is a one-year contract renewal.
Seeing no questions, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero. Thank you.
I move for discussion and action on the Portsmouth High School principal contract.
Second.
Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you. I am pleased, uh, in conjunction with this agenda item, to announce this evening my selection of Dr. Vanessa Reel as the next principal of Portsmouth High School. Dr. Reel is an experienced educator who has served in leadership roles from the elementary through high school levels in Connecticut and Massachusetts. She and her husband are, uh, relocating to this area, uh, more permanently. And she is very much looking forward to this opportunity. She impressed everyone from the initial interview process through a second interview with myself and Dr. Copeland, and then one final meeting with me. She has done her homework on Portsmouth High School and the district, and I think she will be a great principal for the school and addition to our leadership team. This agenda item asks you to approve a three-year contract for Dr. Reel. This contract has been reviewed and unanimously approved by the personnel subcommittee.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, uh, calling the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven, zero. Welcome.
I know she's here this evening. If she wants to say a few words.
Please, and you need, make sure the mic button's on. It's the one on the right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it should turn green.
It's on. I would like to thank the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the search committee, and each of you for supporting me. I am humbled, I am honored, and I am eager to get into the high school. My goal will certainly be to continue the great work that is going on to support teachers. I was listening as hard as I could to your conversations about health and wellness and safety. Those are my two major, major concerns, and certainly the academics flow after that. So I'm, I'm so looking forward to meeting students, staff, the community, and I'm so struck by the scent of community that I feel in Portsmouth. It's really like nowhere else I've ever been. So again, I thank you and I am looking forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for coming. Prior to adjournment, just a reminder that we have the final town budget hearing, which is open to the public with the joint meeting between the town council and the school committee and administrative teams on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And then our final school committee meeting of the year is June twenty-first here at Town Hall. So thank you and meeting adjourned. Oh, I moved for adjournment. Sorry, I'm just rushing it. I'm rushing it.
I think she wants to enter. Do it, make the motion.
Go for it.
Second.
All in favor? Now I can say meeting's adjourned. And we wish-